You to tonight's information, information session. And we can't really call this meeting to order right now, but we can proceed with our presentation with our wonderful Jessica Benavides, our amazing Jessica Benavides. Thank you, alrighty.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. Alright. I'm here to talk to you about partnership schools tonight. And are we putting the PowerPoint? Okay, I just want to make sure because otherwise I will be looking down quite a bit this evening. Here it is. Awesome. Alright. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about the partnership schools. As you know, our partnership schools were identified late last November. And I know our superintendent filled you in on the partnerships that are part of that cohort. But tonight I'm here to really explain to you kind of from top to bottom, how the schools were identified, what that means for our school district and our plans moving forward. Alright, so you might be wondering where did, where did the idea of partnerships schools come from? And so I'm kind of going to take you down a little history lane, I guess, of the partnerships. And so I have a slide here about the federal mandate for accountability and support. So this really started with Every Student Succeeds Act or what we'll call ESSA. So in tonight's meeting, there may be several acronyms. Please stop me because we're so used to saying them all the time that I want to make sure that you have a clear understanding of the letters that we're using. So if I get rolling, please let me know. So the Every Student Succeeds Act really outlined that we have a longstanding commitment to equal opportunity for all students and achievement for all students really nationwide. And so the partnership schools effort is really in response to that law. And so part of ESSA is really coming up with an accountability system for schools and then also a system of how to identify what those schools are. And so that kind of is the background of how this started. And then we'll kind of take you through the journey of MDE and how they decided to interpret that law into action here in Michigan. So if we take a look, many of you have probably heard the school index. Over time, we've had kind of the report card. They've called it lots of different things over time. But we are under the school index. And so the school index looks at several things. ESSA does require that we look at proficiency, which all of you are really familiar with, especially with all of the 98B reporting that we've done on our assessments, M-Step, PSAT, SAT. And then we have growth, which of course we know is really important with students to make sure they're growing adequately to become proficient. Graduation rate, which we really know is kind of the coin of the realm for success for our students. And then we also have our English learner progress and school quality and student success, which we'll share a little bit more about what that last metric really is in just a few minutes. Michigan did decide to include assessment participation in general and then also with our EL population. So they are requiring a 95% participation rate, though it is not part of the components in the school metric. But in order to get a good picture of where our students are, we need to make sure that we're actually testing and getting results for the majority of our students. Then what the Michigan Department of Education does is they take those components outlined in the page before that we just looked at, and they weight them based on what they're considering to be the most important to, I wouldn't say the least important because it's all important, but where they feel that they should be weighted so that they can come up with an accurate score for each of our schools. So as you can see on the pie graph, they really have prioritized student growth and student proficiency, which makes sense, right? Because we want to have students that can achieve the Michigan State standards and then earn their graduation diploma and be successful adults. They also then have weighted school quality and student success. And that's the one that has the asterisk next to it, which is really prioritizing chronic absenteeism because we know that students that are not in school, you're not learning, right? You're not getting access to the education that you need. And then also access to arts and physical education, library, and then also advanced coursework and post-secondary enrollment. So they kind of roll that all up into one and they call it school quality and student success. And then you see outlined the graduation rate, EL learner progress, and then test participation. After they get all of those and they weight them based on the school, then they give us a school index report. If you're interested, and this goes for the public too, on my school data, so it's MI, so from Michigan, school data, you can look up the school index scorecard for any school in the state of Michigan and it will break all of this down for you. That's all public information. So if any of our board members are interested in looking at a particular school or at all of our schools, you can really dig into kind of the granular level on each of the school scores. So this is just a sample. This is actually not from our school, but a sample that was provided to us by the MDE. And this is how it is broken down. So you will see that the areas of the components are on the left. And then they have the percentage, the component, and then they give us our weighted points. You'll get a score anywhere between zero and 100. And then you get the building overall index. So for this school with the red arrow, they're at 72.3, for example. So that's a pretty good score out of 100, right? So you're going to be ranked probably in the top, I would say, 70th to 80th percentile for the state with a score like this. But any score that scores, or school, excuse me, that scores under 23.88 is what they're considering a partnership school. So that number, you will see change over time because how they do this is they take those scores, so like the 72.3, they get every score of the schools in Michigan and then they rank them from highest score to lowest score. And then they take the bottom 5%, draw a line, and whatever that score is becomes your partnership schools. So over time, we will always have a bottom 5%, even if we're meeting or exceeding standards because that metric will change based on the achievement of the entire state. So this score is used every three years. So this is how partnerships are identified every three years. So you will not hear us have another partnership cohort come in next year. It would, if, if for some reason we have one in three years, that's when they would be identified for the partnership again. But you do get a school index score every year.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm looking at the component rate. So 34 that considers low average rate upon what the overall is and then the weighted point.
So how they, that's where on the My School Data website, they will show you kind of the criteria to get that score. There's even a score calculator, school calculator, which is really great. But it's really based on what they weighted. So the student growth is actually weighted to 34%. So that's why it's being multiplied by that 34 to give you kind of that overall weighted score. Yes, yes. Yeah, the weights on this will match the slide before. And so it's just telling you the school scored in the first column. They multiply it by the weight. You get the third column and then they add them all up. Yep. Yeah, it took us many hours to decipher all of this ourselves. So please ask away your questions. We've looked at it so much though that sometimes I get a little, you know, numb to the fact that this is, it's a lot of data. So please ask your questions. From that list, we then get three types of state identifications, okay? So we have the first one, which is our comprehensive support and improvement, otherwise known as CSI. So there's our acronyms again, which we all love to do in the world of education, which means that that school is in the overall bottom 5%. Okay, so that means you're going to be identified as a partnership school. So we'll talk a little bit about that in just a second. The other thing that you could have is you could have a higher than 5% on the school index, but your graduation rate is less than 67%. If that's the case, then you also would be in CSI. Or a school that was CSI in the last group of cohorts and did not meet the benchmarks. So they're identified again. And then the last one is a school that was ATS, which is the next bucket that I'll talk to you about in just a second. And they also did not exit out of ATS. So then they make them in this top category of CSI, okay? The second category we have are additional targeted supports. So these are schools that are in one or, have one or more subgroups in the bottom 25% or in the bottom overall 5%. So I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute because we do have a couple of our schools in that particular category. Their, their overall score though would be above the 23.88. But they have a couple of subgroups in their school that are below that mark for achievement. And so that's how they would be identified. And then the last one is a school has one or more subgroups in the bottom 25% and that's the least amount of support from the state of Michigan, which would be considered targeted supports and improvement or TSI, okay? So those are the three types of identification from the state that they get after they go through all of the school index scores and all of the achievement scores for the entire state of Michigan, okay? So on the next slide, you're going to see how our school district falls within all of the information I just gave you. So all of the identifications and which schools are in which categories, okay? So previously, I know our superintendent kind of gave you, I had printed for you an overall ranking of all of our schools and what their school index scores are. So I'll share that again with the superintendent to share with all of you. But these are the ones that we are talking about this evening because they do fall within the partnership agreement, okay? So if we take a look at our comprehensive support and improvement, our CSI schools, the ones that are in blue, their school index score was less than 23.88. So they are qualified and put into our partnership agreement. So that's 10 of our schools. We have three other schools, Capital Area Online, Eastern and Everett, that were, had some subgroups in ATS. So that needed some additional targeted supports in the last three years. Not all of their subgroups emerged from and achieved in the, out of the bottom 25 or bottom 5%. So now they've identified them as CSI. But they are not in the partnership because we only have to focus on those particular subgroups, okay? And then the, the schools that are in red, Kenan, Riddle and Willow, they did have index scores of less than 23.88, but their N, meaning the number of students that were tested, was less than 30 because they only had third graders, right? Take the M-Step test. So because their N is less than 30, the state says that's not a valid enough number. And so they say then they're exempt from being identified in the comprehensive supports, okay? The second group, our ATS group, we have Dwight Rich and Sheridan Row and they did have subgroups that were low performing. And so they will receive additional targeted supports. And then we do not have any schools in the targeted supports and improvement. So if you don't see a school name on here, that means that they scored above 23.88 on the school index. And so they are not part of these, this, what we would consider identified. They would just be getting universal supports, okay? Just going to pause there, that's a lot of information. Let's see if you have any questions thus far.
Thank you for the presentation so far, Jessica. I just have, sorry, Ms. Benavides. I have a question for Kenan, Riddle and Rio. Even though they technically, because the population didn't qualify, are we still going to treat them as partnership schools?
Yes, so as we kind of get through this, go through the presentation, you're going to see some of the benchmarks that we have assigned for these schools to achieve. And then they will go into the partnership agreement and they were held to that was by the state of Michigan. But you'll see that the benchmarks that we have chosen are things that we would expect from all of our schools, like an increase in attendance, an increase in achievement scores. And so since the time that our superintendent has been here, he has already put in a lot of these programs, a lot of the things working with our instructional division, the data, the new visions portal to look at all of the data for our school district. So even without the partnership agreement, these are things that we would already have put in place for our schools. This is just another level of accountability. So all of our schools, in our last admin meeting that we just had on Tuesday, we went through all of these. Every school knows these are the metrics that they have to be really achieving to, to make sure that our, our kids are high performing. Because as you know, for the 98B presentation, we have a lot of room to grow. And that's for all of our schools, not just the bottom 5%. So, great question.
Jessica, can I just add something? So, you know, the other thing, and I'm really appreciative that President Willis asked the question about the schools, Kenan, Riddle and Willow, is the supports that we're going to be giving these schools, they're really good supports. They're things that we believe in. And so even though they might not technically qualify, we know that those students need these extra supports. And so to Jessica and the team's credit, they're able to kind of roll them into all of these things that we're doing. And to MDE's credit, they kind of said, oh yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So they've been supportive of that move as well.
So with, I do believe a couple of these schools are going to be changing the demographics as far as grade level.
That's right.
So how are we already anticipating or planning that?
Very good question. So as you know, we're merging schools. And so we have two of our schools are merging Atwood and Rio. And so the Rio, Rio because it is technically closing, meaning the, there's a code, entity code that goes with each of our schools. So because we have to close that code out when we merge those two schools, they will be accountable under the Atwood data. So again, because they're in the bottom 5%, it's not that that hurts or harms them in any way because the metric would have been the same. But those two schools will be consolidated under Atwood as the partnership school. So moving forward, after this summer and the EEM codes go through, you will only see nine schools within the partnership. So we will have to do an amendment. And then our two schools, Riddle and Willow, they will also be consolidating. And, but because they're not identified in the partnership, that won't really impact the partnership agreement. And those principals have already started working together to create their plan for the new school. Alright, so we have a partnership timeline. So just to show you kind of where we've been and where we're going, we have this began, our journey kind of began with a partnership on November of 2022. So just this past November of this school year, when our superintendent did a press release and we've been very public about what we're going to be doing for our school district and really embracing our schools and making sure that they have the supports they need to really tackle student achievement. And then in December, we, we were contacted by the MDE and we were assigned our, we call her PAL, which is our partnership agreement liaison. And that's Lisa Francisco. She's been really wonderful to work with, super supportive. She's also supporting Jackson Public Schools and a few others because she's in charge of that particular region. So she's kind of been a wealth of knowledge. We've been meeting with her over the last four months. So from January till now, we've been really working with Lisa and doing our partnership planning. And then also we have a partner in Ingham ISD. And one of the roles that the Ingham ISD plays is we will receive what's called RAG funds. And so there, it's an assistance grant, regional assistance grant. But the funding does go through the ISD. And then the ISD works with us because it is Lansing School District targeted money. And then we receive the supports from the ISD. So that will amount in just over a million dollars. We don't have the exact amount yet because it is all estimated from the MDE, but that money will be coming our way and that we will be working with the ISD with those schools to figure out which, what supports and how they can support us, whether it's in personnel, programs, professional development, those kinds of things. So they have been at all of our meetings. Shelley Rue from the ISD has really been our contact and then Sadie Donald. And then April 17th, which is just a few days away, we just received our approved MDE partnership agreement. And that will be signed by our board president, superintendent and the superintendent of the ISD. And then on April 17th, we will be considered entering the partnership. And then really the work has already begun, but it will be work with the schools to really work toward their 18-month benchmarks. And we will have those meetings between August and November. They kind of give you a really big, broad range because these are dates for the state of Michigan. And so where we're scheduled within those, those months is why there's a span there. But we only have one meeting, not over four, not over four months of time. And then we will have our final meeting between November and December. We'll have an academic outcome. And then we will have our end of year report or end of partnership report. We will be coming before the board at the 18-month benchmark. It's one of the requirements, plus it's just good practice to let you know how we're doing with our benchmarks because we're accountable to you as well and all of our constituents. And so you will see a, kind of a progress report, if you will, for the 18-month benchmarks. Something that's not on here is Dr. Peyton Stalter, who is our current REAP director. So part of the REAP is really working on systems and building sustainable systems in the school district. So he is going to be overseeing much of the work of the partnership. And so though you'll see an 18-month benchmark review, the schools will be meeting with him monthly and then MDE bimonthly to really see how they're coming along with their benchmarks, any additional supports, how are the activities that they're choosing working? And so we don't, we won't wait till the 18-month benchmark to say, okay, how are we? So there's a really robust monitoring process throughout the time that we're in the partnership. Alright. So you might be wondering, what does our PAL, Lisa Francisco, do? What's the role of the MDE in all of this? Since they're the ones that are, have these accountability measures, what are some of the things that they're going to be doing with and for the Lansing School District? So one of the things is they help us develop the supports. So again, we are working with them on some early literacy things, just some best practices. Also, Lisa's been really great about connecting us. We had some questions on some funding. And because she's part of the Michigan Department of Ed, she was able to say, oh, we just email this person, let me get on that and I'll have them contact you. So she's been really wonderful on getting us the connections that we need to get some answers to our questions. They do assist with the development of the partnership agreement. So I told you, we've been working with her for the last four months. If there's any barriers, she helps to break those down, like connecting us with people at the Michigan Department of Ed. Any technical assistance on how to fill out the application, what the requirements are, because there are quite a few. And then helping us to identify any new partners, connect us with professional development, if she knows of some really good things. And then also they just provide direct support to the school district. So that's their role. It truly is a partnership in that they don't tell us what to do. They're not, they don't say, and come in and say, oh, you need to meet this metric. You need to use this program. They just say, what is the Lansing School District going to do and how can we support that? And so we're really lucky, like I said, because we've had some really good guidance since Ben has been here about things that we can do to improve our schools. And so we were kind of well on our way. And so it was kind of seamless to fold those into the partnership agreement.
I will point out, President Willis and I had to, I wouldn't say suffer was the right word, but we had to sit through a very, very interesting and wonderful meeting with all of the other partnership districts in the area that were through middle cities. And one of the things that I'm very proud of and I appreciate Jessica keep saying the superintendent, but this is really a team effort. We went around in all the districts saying like, what are you doing? And districts were like, oh, we're doing this one thing, two things. And I think I listed like 10 and everybody was like, oh, okay then. So that's, that just shows you, and I hope those listening at home, we knew we needed to do these things anyway. And so we're really doing quite a lot of work. And I look forward to sharing all of the different parts of the actions that we're taking. And so every time you hear Jessica talk about like, we're doing this or we're doing that, we were going to do that regardless. But what's nice about partnership is now we're codifying it and they're actually going to see the results. And we're, you know, we're all kind of well on our way to it. So, you know, thank you for, keep on saying it, but it really is a team effort and not just, not just me, I promise.
It's a little heavy lifting for one person. Alright. So the next area that we're going to talk about is, we are going to talk to you about what are the goals that we chose. So the MDE really encouraged us to choose three goals. It's a manageable number, right? And so the goals that we chose were around CR-PBIS. So when you see MTSS, that's multi-tiered systems of support. So as the board has talked to us about, what is tier one, what is tier two, what is tier three? That's exactly what that is. So what universal supports are we giving? What additional supports and then what targeted supports to our students or schools? So when you see MTSS, that's just multi-tiered systems of support. The first one we have is CR-PBIS. So this is culturally responsive, positive behaviors interventions and supports. So again, Gardner, actually, it's wonderful that we're here because they have done an excellent job with CR-PBIS. So what that means is identifying clear expectations for our students, making sure there's a behavior matrix for all of the places in the school. So what should we be doing in the cafeteria? What should we be doing in the hallway? How do I run a lesson? It says, it can be as simple as when you're starting a lesson, there's a CHAMP's framework. And so it's, can I, what kind of movement, M is for movement. So am I required to stay in my seat for this part of the lesson? Can I get up and move? Can I work with a partner? Is this small group work? So it's really clarifying for students clear expectations because we know clear expectations means then students are attend, can attend at the learning. And also it leads to a much more well-rounded culture. It's a peaceful atmosphere for students to be in because everyone knows what they're supposed to be doing. And so we know that we really started CR-PBIS, I would say, I'm going to look at maybe Cordelia, about seven or eight years ago, would you say we started CR-PBIS? It's been a while, maybe even before that. Yeah. At least 10? Okay. And so we initially, I was a principal when we started with CR-PBIS and we had a huge leadership kind of summit, if you will, at Eastern High School in the cafeteria of the current Pattonville, current, current new Eastern, I mean. And all of the schools worked on their CR-PBIS. We developed our matrix. And Office of School Culture has been doing trainings throughout that time. But this summer, we're going to do a total reboot again to make sure that again, the entire district is on the same page when it comes to expectations, posters, how we're putting things out for kids, especially because it's important. But also if we have students moving from one space to another, whether it's from a pre-K3 to a 48, K8 to a high school, it's going to be very seamless that they'll know, oh, okay, I know how to do this because this has been common expectations across my experience in schools. Then we have MTSS attendance. So as we know, again, if students aren't in school, they can't have access to the, they don't have access to the high-quality learning that's happening in teaching. So attendance is important to tackle. And then that kind of goes without saying academics, which is the whole reason that we're here in a school district. Then what we did with our three goal areas is we broke them down into three or more benchmarks. So these are what we're going to be held accountable to at the 18-month mark, okay? So if you're wondering, alright, you talked to kind of the high level, what does that mean if I'm a partnership school? What, what am I held to? What do I have to do? So the first goal if we tackle, which is CR-PBIS, we want to make sure that they have their reducing office referrals. So we know that if you have CR-PBIS really implemented, then students are not coming out of the classroom, right? They're learning, they're staying in the classroom. Again, it's almost like they've come to school and they're attending, but now they actually have to go to class and stay in class. And if they're having to leave class for behavior, behavioral issues, then again, they're missing out on instruction. So that's why we've chosen this as one of our goals. So we should see that our office referrals at our partnership and really across the district is decreasing. Or we do have some schools that do a really wonderful job on this. And so they'll, they have a maintenance goal that they have to kind of keep their level of their office referrals at a certain number. The second thing is we have what's called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory, which is an inventory about CR-PBIS implementation. So there's walkthroughs that are included. It's, you look around the school, you ask where their matrices are, you talk to students. Do they have teams that meet regularly? And it's a, it's on PBIS apps. It's a program that we all kind of pay into, if you will. And then it's a standardized rubric. And so we would want to see that, okay, I'm scoring at about 30%, so I'm not fully implemented. I should be at 70 for a full implementation. So we should see that rubric increasing over time. So that's one of the metrics. And then the last metric is that they should have regular meetings every month minimally. So at our school, again, when I was a principal, we had our CR-PBIS team, we actually met weekly. And it was a pretty brief meeting, but we looked at our discipline data and we said, what's working, what's not working? And what do we need to, need to do different this week? So if we saw that there was a certain classroom where maybe there was a substitute teacher and there's a lot of office referrals, well, what are we going to do for that classroom this week? Or maybe in the cafeteria, we've changed something. And so we're seeing some behaviors sprout up from, from that atmosphere. So what will we do differently this week in the cafeteria? And so it's really about constant tweaking and making sure that we're And so it's really about constant tweaking and making sure that we're supporting teachers to make sure they have the tools in their toolbox, but also that we're really clear with expectations for students. The next one, of course, is attendance. So the three metrics for attendance are making sure that our daily attendance is increasing, making sure that our chronic absenteeism is decreasing, so our students that are missing more than 10% of the school year. So we're really targeting and getting some things in place to make sure we're reaching out, breaking down barriers, making sure our students are able to attend. And then the last thing is, again, monthly meetings to look at that attendance and really be very targeted and specific on looking at individual students and not just the school as a whole. And then the last one is our multi-tiered system support for academics. This is the one the board has probably heard the most of our, the most about, especially with our 98B presentations. And this is an area where this bench, this goal in particular is where we, this will carry us through to our 36-month benchmark. And this is where they will be looking at the entirety on our 36-month benchmark. So this is where we have to increase proficiency in ELA, proficiency in math, as measured by M-STOP and SAT, and then also growth, MET growth. So that's that one-year growth we should be seeing in all of our students for NWA in the, in the area of ELA and math. And then last, and what I would deem probably most important, is an increase in our graduation rate for Sexton, which is our identified school. You might be wondering how this matches up with the State of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Plan. And so I've listed the eight that really apply to our, to this particular endeavor, I guess I would say. And so the ones in red have been identified within our partnership agreement. So literacy achievement, health, safety, wellness, percentage of students who graduate, and then adequate and equitable, equitable school funding. Which we didn't really talk a lot about, but there is a resource allocation review that we do. And I really want to highlight our team in finance, Kim and John, and our grants department, Joelle and Kurt, because they do a wonderful job looking at our finances and then making sure that those are equitably distributed amongst the schools.
And just something to add to that, as everybody at Central and the board is probably sick of me talking about school-based budgeting, but the, the gold standard of equitability for school funding is school-based budgeting, which means the money follows the kid. And so one of the things that we've been working really hard with centrally with the schools is to say, we're not going to just say, we hold the money and if a school comes to us and asks for money, we'll give it. Or if we have a nice relationship with a certain school, they just get something and another school doesn't. And so what I appreciate about the Strategic Education Plan from the MDE is that it's not just adequate, but it's equitable school funding, is that each of our schools are different, each of our schools are unique. And so we want to make sure that the money is following not just the student, but kind of the needs of the student. And this is, you know, this year for next year will be the first time that the district's ever really done that. And it's going to be pretty eye-opening in terms of some of the discrepancies of funding that we have seen across the district, which certain schools getting more than others and certain schools getting less. And so, you know, starting with next year's budget, you're going to see a much more equitable sense of, of funding. So I'm really glad that, you know, Dr. Rice and MDE, as well as us, and the work that we're doing is going to really focus on that all of our kids need to be treated with equity. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question, a couple of questions. So I know earlier in the year, we were talking about SSAs possibly being, I mean, those 13 schools, because we have that partnership in the funding allocation through the ISD, is it possible that that's how we can get those SSAs, at least for those 13 schools, adding that additional resource component? Is that something that we're looking at? That is my first, first and possibly second question. I had a note, hold on, let me just swatch it. And point three, improve the health, safety, and wellness of all learners. How are we going to be monitoring and tracking, especially, I think, if we're looking at what's happening in the news and in the community and conjunction with our students now, how are we going to really track that? I mean, because I do know that there are some things that's missing and components, components that have been missing. I know office and school culture is doing, but I mean, sometimes when a parent gets frustrated, they just kind of, and we lose that child in the process or they're not being educated. How are we going to track that?
Okay. Can you tell me SSAs? I'm not familiar with that acronym, so I apologize.
Thank you. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. All good. I was, I was thinking there was something I wasn't aware of. It's all good.
In my defense, I haven't had coffee at all today.
It's okay.
Today.
Currently, all of our schools have student support specialists. We do have some that are vacant positions, but they do all have allocations that they put in to have a student support specialist this year. So currently, the schools at the school improvement level will have some decisions to make. So based on their data with the funding that they have, what are the supports that they would need? I do know that we do have some district support specialists that work specifically with the Office of School Culture, and Cordelia has dispatched them to the schools when they're absent or if there's a situation or a behavior intervention plan that needs to be created. So currently, it isn't equitable amongst those schools.
Yeah. And, oh, and sorry, one thing to just add to that, so, because you're right, you know, if you've got schools that have needs, you know, things like the SSSs are really important. But what we also find, and this is where school-based budgeting really kicks in, is if you're the principal and you look at your school and you say, wow, I think it's more important for me to have a behavior specialist or an interventionalist or a literacy coach than it is for a math coach, you're going to be able to make those decisions based on what you know as principal and what your school population says, rather than somebody sitting at, you know, 519 Kalamazoo deciding and playing kind of puppeteer. So that's where this kind of new way of thinking is really powerful. The other hope, of course, is that with the RAG funding and TAG and some other things, is these individual schools are going to get some extra money and then they'll be able to decide, you know, oh, maybe I want a second SSS or maybe I want a third behavioral specialist. So that's hopefully where you're going to see some of this kind of equitable stuff. And then I, I, you know, let you do the health and safety questions here, but.
So the way that we're monitoring that just within the partnership agreement really is the implementation of our culturally responsive behaviors and supports. So that is how, the measurable tool that we have. Of course, we have our Office of School Culture and they are always monitoring kind of the safety aspect of our schools. And then also we have our depart, our Director of Health, Sue Wheeler, who comes and does our wonderful COVID report every month. And having her on board, I, I will be really interested to see kind of how that part evolves as far as the health part. There is a MiFi assessment tool, a rubric tool that's used with our older students. And so that does measure kind of their perception of health, their environment, the school, home life, and so forth. And so that's another kind of benchmark that we would use for health. But as far as the partnership goes, really the tool that we'll be using is kind of the Tiered Fidelity Inventory.
And my hope, or our hope, of course, is that, you know, if a child is not being sent to the office, is not being removed from the classroom, is not being suspended, those are things that are showing that, you know, health, safety, wellness is certainly much better. So that's a good indication. But I think to the point that was made is, you know, that's also why we have parent surveys and student surveys, as well as some other indications. And so the hope, of course, and when you look at our strategic plan, one of the things that's embedded in that is the survey results from parents and students and staff saying that they feel safer, they feel more, you know, trusted, things like that. And, you know, in some respects, how somebody feels about their safety and wellness is, is as real as, you know, whatever your definition of actual safety and wellness. Because if you feel afraid or you feel unsafe or a parent feels like their kids aren't getting the right education, that's what matters. The parent needs to be feeling like they're being served, the parent, the student feels that as well. So, you know, there's a nice synergy between the strategic plan that the board passed, as well as the partnership agreement that we're signing or doing, whatever, so.
And we didn't want the partnership agreement to be just kind of another thing. We wanted to really layer and embed it in the work of the strategic plan. And then of course, the goals that we've had for our school district, so. Within the partnership agreement, we have our, in the first column, we have the types of goals those are. So are the types of benchmarks. And the reason that's important is because the MDE groups all of these to then create a metric that they will tell us if we're on track, on track with, off track with progress, or off track at the 18-month mark. And so I'll walk you through. In the first column, we have, we have our first four goals and they're, the color, the coloring in the second one is just to tell you the grouping. So all of the attendance ones are blue, all of the academic ones are red, and then CB, our PBIS is green. So you can kind of see that there's, we've really spread them across all of these different metrics that we look at. So the first is the process metrics, and those are really the ones that, what systems are we putting in place to monitor data meetings, rubrics, and so process data? And then we have local, non-academic, local academic, state academic, and then of course our index score, which we looked at at the beginning of the presentation. And then really the metric for that is they want to see it increase. And so on the very right-hand column, you will see we have four of our process goals, our, our metrics, three in the non-academic, two at the elementary, and then three at the secondary, because of course we have the graduation rate, which would impact our high school that's on our partnership group, two at the state level, and then that equals 12 benchmarks that our elementaries will be held to, and then 13 at the secondary because of the graduation rate. So it kind of tells you our overall kind of how they're spread out. And then on the, and then the MDE will look at this and I'll kind of show you what their expectation is for the 18-month benchmark coming up. At the 18-month benchmark, they are going to give us kind of a rating. So based on the following slide, which I'll show you, they will let us know if we're on track, and they've given us the metric here. So at least one half of the schools are on track and at most, one school is off track. So it kind of gives us how, how that rating is, is developed right here. And then in the second one, we have off track with progress and the metric is there. And then last, lastly, we have if we're off track at the 18-month mark. In talking with Lisa during our meetings, I asked her, so what happens if we're off track or off track with progress? Is there an accountability measure? Obviously, we need to change some things and tweak them as a district, which we would be doing, but is there any real onus from the Michigan Department of Education? And her response was, we really would just be starting to look at your activities and making the adjustments and changes that we need so that you would become on track. So there's no reconstitution efforts or any accountability that would be a consequence necessarily, but more it would be tweaking of the plans. So just to let you know where we would be in 18 months and you would get a designation for our school district of where we are.
Ms. Benavides?
Yes.
Can I just confirm? So that 18-month benchmark review is going to be the first comprehensive view that the MDE is going, MDE is going to do as far as our metrics performance?
Yes. Although in our bi-monthly meetings with Lisa, we will be looking at those.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's the official, the official one. All right. The next slide really shows how the MDE will be scoring those benchmarks. Okay? So if we take a look at the process one, again, this is the same slide that you saw before. To be on tar, on track, we have to have the on track or met the benchmark for three out of the four of our process. Okay? So what that means is our schools are regularly having those monthly data meetings, their regular, their TFI score is increasing. And so if they're on, on target, three out of four, and these are by school. So for example, Atwood would get their score, Avril would get their score, Sexton would get their score. And then we have our non-academic and academic, they kind of bundle those. And for the elementary, they're requiring us to have two of the five elements on track. So we would have meant those benchmarks, or two out of six for secondary. And then for the state academic, one out of two. So we had to be making adequate progress in either ELA or math. And then lastly, increasing our school index score from one year to the other. So I just want to kind of point out that this is kind of a low bar, right? So obviously, we, we're not looking at two out of five. We would like five out of five. We want to make sure that we're making progress with all of our elements. But also I do understand that any type of school improvement effort is going to take three to five years' time. And so in a way, it's letting us know, okay, go in all in. If you fall a little bit short, hey, it's okay because you're going for it. So I do appreciate their grace in that. But I would say that our expectations obviously are going to be a little bit higher, just internally.
Question point. So as a district, even though we have that liaison through the MBE, what are we doing and how often are we measuring these as a district itself?
Yeah, fabulous question. So Peyton Stalter, who is going to be really kind of heading up a lot of the partnership initiatives, he will be meeting with our schools once a month, because we have 10 of them, we'll have nine next year. And so we will be looking at the metrics monthly on our end. So realistically, the MDE is really coming alongside us. They're not helping us to collect the data and those kinds of things. They're just saying, hey, is there anything we can do? How are you coming along? So for us, our team is really focused on monthly, if not weekly, dipsticks of, of these. For example, if you go into Ben's office, you want to know what the daily average attendance rate is, he has it for every single day of the school year for our entire district. And so those are metrics that we look at every day. I would say too, that we have the new Visions portal, which is the data portal that we're using for the school district. And so when a principal logs into that system, they get their daily average right there, that day, that moment, from the beginning of the school year till then, they get their number of chronic absenteeism. And so though the state is really looking at bigger chunks of time, we are really looking at very short amounts of time. And we, and the tracking system that we've developed is monthly.
And, and some other things just to add to that, and thank you for that. I mean, you know, even though grad rate is only once a year, we're looking at, you know, credits to get to graduation every day. I personally go to every high school once a month and meet with the principal and their kind of counseling team, and we go child by child and say, is this kid close to graduation? What are we doing? How are we getting that kid there? We have graduation specialists that are doing that. We have the district graduation specialist. So those things are happening really on a daily, weekly basis. The other thing too, is when you look at things like, you know, test scores, so of course, we're going to increase the NWA, et cetera, but we're trying to really bring in, you know, daily, weekly, monthly accountabilities for students. So it's not just waiting until the end of the year M-STOP, it's what are we doing three times a year with NWA? What are we doing on a daily basis within those classrooms? So, you know, in some respects, you look at this, these benchmarks and you can only see a full number at the end of the year. But what's nice is, you know, Jessica's team especially, they've done over, I think it's almost 1,100 school visits this year. That is, those daily, hey, what's going on? How are we doing things? You know, so this was, this is never going to work unless we are looking at this every day, all the time and focusing on it. And then, you know, when MDE comes every 18 months, hopefully we'll have a lot to show for it.
And then we look at our 36-month academic outcome. So as you saw, there was a lot of benchmarks that we used at the 18-month, and then you look at this and say, wait a minute, there's only six. What happened? And it's because really the outcome that the State of Michigan wants to make sure, and of course we do too, is that our students are graduating and that our kids are performing at a high level. And so all of the other benchmarks that we put in place are hopefully to get us here, right? So having students increase their attendance, that's going to help our achievement. Having students with clear expectations, a wonderful culture, safe environment, again, will lead to higher academic achievement. And so this last slide really shows you that they are going to be holding us to the NWA growth, the M-STOP and SAT, state academic performance, and then of course, that we've increased our school index score. They are expecting that we would have two of the four benchmarks for elementary met and then two out of the five for high school. And then lastly, increasing our index score for the school. So they would increase from that 23.88 or less, whatever their score might be, they would want to make sure that it increases, that it's going up. And so that would be, that will tell the MDE how we did in the partnership. And that's where you will see the summary report and the presentation to let you know how our schools progressed through the partnership. Of course, this is data that we already share with the board in our 93, or 98B reporting. So these are things, again, that won't be surprises to all of you when you see our data because you get those reports from us twice a year. because you get those reports from us twice a year. So we don't really need to look at the last couple of slides, and that's only because these are, if we don't make our 36-month benchmark, but just to keep you aware of how this could work. So you'll see the word reconstitute, and I want to make sure that that doesn't scare anyone on the board. That doesn't mean that the state is coming in and taking over any of our schools. It doesn't mean that we're closing our schools, but what it does mean is that we have to put in accountability measures for the schools that are not making the progress on the, in the partnership. And so again, this would be on a school-by-school basis. So this isn't all 10 of our schools. It would be if we had one, then we would do it with that one particular school. So just to be clear. We had to submit three areas of accountabilities to the state of Michigan as part of our partnership agreement, and so those are outlined here for you. So on the very first page with number one, these are the ones that are mandatory from the Michigan State Legislature. So they have, that will make significant changes to the instructional and non-instructional programming of the school. And we have to do, it's an and/or situation, so we have some choices here. The district shall review whether the current principal of the school should remain or be replaced, and also that we must require the adoption of goals similar to the goals included in the partnership agreement with a limit of three years to achieve those goals. So again, you'd enter the partnership again as another identification period. The Lansing School District made sure that we outlined numbers two and three because we felt those were really important for our school district and matched kind of our, our vision for how we would want to proceed, which is really to make significant changes to the instructional or non-instructional programming of the school. Obviously, if you're not achieving, because that's how you, how you exit the partnership, then we need to do something different at the school, instructionally. Something's not working. And again, to Board Member Williams' point, we need to know that before 36 months passes, right? So this should not be a surprise to us. We should be tweaking and changing things, things all along. And then lastly, we would look at the organizational flow chart and making sure that we have the right personnel in the right spots. So making sure that if we have teachers that are really highly effective, are they in the right grade level? Do we have them all in one grade level? Do we need to spread the wealth? How are we doing as mentors for teachers, so forth and so on? Also, the principal would be included in that. Is that the right fit for that particular school? Maybe their academic expertise would be better in a different school. And so those would be things that we would look at if one of our schools did not meet the 36-month benchmark. And that really is an overview of the partnership, walking you through from the day we were kind of designated to what you can expect over the next couple of years to 2025.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to raise a couple of questions, and I apologize if anything I'm about to state was previously stated because I was tardy. Just give me the church finger and I'll be quiet. But something I just wanted to point out to my board colleagues is the, the terms of the three-year contract actually go November to November because it's from the time we were originally designated. So it's not by school year calendar, which I just think it's interesting. The other thing I wanted to point out is that there statewide are 54 districts that were identified as needing to be involved in this partnership agreement. I'm also going to say this too. Appreciate everything that you've provided, and I think that these are great accountability action steps for us to do. I also didn't hear anything that was incredibly groundbreaking, right? Like, we're not reinventing anything as far as providing strength and supports. What I see us doing is having some intentionality around measuring, tracking, and supporting the work that we're doing. So I say that as a, a measure of encouragement. I don't want staff to be worried or concerned. We know that great things are happening. We just have to sort of do some nudging. So I'm just really encouraged by that, and thank you for putting this together.
I think it's really important because we have had priorities, they used to call them priority schools in the past, and oftentimes then they flood the school with supports and money and people, but that's not sustainable. So then after three years, we're back in the same spot that we were because our district budgets, as you know, can't support all of that. And so I really appreciate the fact that when, there's a lot of people that had to come together to build the partnership agreement, and we really wanted to build something that with or without this partnership agreement, we were able to do and tackle, and that we could then sustain really over the life of our schools. And so thanks for pointing that out because it has to be something that's realistic and sustainable, and it may take us a little while, but it's better to kind of have those really strong roots to make sure that they're grounded in, and just become kind of our day-to-day practice in our schools for students.
That's great. Ms. Gilgey?
I don't really have any questions, but I just want to highlight some of the things that I've, I think are great predictors that this is going to go well, and it's a lot, kind of when Ben said, how many visits have they made this year to schools? 1,100. And we're three-quarters, 1,100 school visits? Okay, so that I, that kind of commitment is just, I've never heard of anything like that before, and the, the, the work that you're doing strategically, data-driven, day-by-day, not just, you know, it's not just quantifiable data, that you're also looking at the quantitative data with asking people how they feel and, you know, the, the culture and the CRPBIS is a lot about the social and emotional stake in all of this, and it just is really comprehensive, and I'm really hopeful about the whole thing, and I want to thank you all so much for your work.
I'd like to highlight with the school visits that the, the real work happens in the classroom, right? And so I want to highlight that the fact that we're doing the school visits is to make sure that we have a pulse on what's happening in the schools, what supports do they need, how is the school culture, what's happening so that we're here? It's not that we're doing extraordinary things when we come in, but we're here to support the instruction that's happening in the classroom. So I really want to highlight kind of the magic of the teacher because that's where all of this is. And so it's important for Central Office to be in schools because we need to know what's happening, and we need to be there to support. We've had lots of people that come and someone goes homesick, and we're there in the cafeteria to, to help out. So it's really just about, we're really all invested in our schools and school district, and so it highlights the commitment that Central Office has to our schools because, again, the magic happens in the four walls of that classroom, and we just can't say that enough.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I would add to that is if you remember the framework for great schools, that outer ring is trust. And what has happened, and this happens in like every school district, right? There's downtown, and then there's the schools, right? And there's, you know, the magic happens in the classroom, and then there's, you know, I think when I first got here, I was called a suit from downtown, right? And, you know, and that's legit, right? And, and that the more time that you spend in the schools, the more you build that trust. And what can happen out of that trust is the teachers, the principals, the school staff, the parents being willing to share when things are good or bad. Like today, I got an email from a teacher, that, you know, a teacher to a superintendent just about a window. Like, that's because there's an open level of communication. Of course, everybody's CC'd and we're going to get it taken care of, but, you know, we can't build that level of trust unless we're in those classrooms and we're in those schools. And I think that's where, you know, and I've said this very publicly, the people in the district are good, they're talented, they care deeply. The systems and structures are the problem. And so the more that we have those personal relationships with the staff and can listen and say, oh, oh, the system is that, you know, you can't even put in your whatever, but we'll fix that, you know, but we won't know until we have those conversations. So, you know, to Jessica's point, those visits are building those trusts and building the support so that we're able to get in there. And, you know, look, the district has, at this point, you know, 26 schools and 10,000 students and, you know, hundreds of faculty, and so there's a lot. And so the more that we know folks on a one-to-one basis and a personal basis, it really builds that level of, hey, I'm willing to tell you that maybe I'm struggling. Can you help? Rather than, hey, you know, don't come in, we don't want you.
I just want to say this brings me joy. You, you all mentioned a few words, intentionality, commitment, trust. Those are important factors, and I just appreciate the work that you're doing. And I know it's going to take a while, right? Because we're adjusting, but I know that our district is amazing. I know that our educators are amazing. I know that this board is amazing. I know that I'm the boss to an amazing superintendent. So, so I know that there is hope in the district, and I want to thank you for presenting today. And I also want to thank the Michigan Department of Education for taking us on. I do, as a partner school, because you're providing resources for us, and we need it. So thank you.
I do have one, maybe two more questions, because again, I'm, I'm new, so I'm, I'm adjusting. Ask away. I did pull out my mid-year assessment because I tend to take notes, and I actually looked back, I was like, oh, I had those schools listed. Kudos because we did have a lot of increase in growth. Sidebar, Cheryl Road is not supposed to be on that list. My child went to that school with you. I'm just like, yes. I'm just kidding. And we had a good first question though. But you said something that, it's kind of been going into my mind, and I'm trying to figure out how to phrase it without offending anybody. The people that are operating the building, so basically the CEO of the building, that's how I'm going to address that. Are we going to, before we go into the next school year, assess their performance based on these? Because I'm sure they've been there a while, and looking at the mid-year assessment and then having to do this partnership prompts to have some questions go through in my mind. Why are you the CEO of that building? But we are not meeting our goals or capitalizing the way that we should, be it K through three. What, what do we need to change? Because I look back kind of briefly, and Luton seems to be a, a model. They're, they're doing well. What are we pulling from Luton that we can spread around the place? I mean, I'm just like, wow, I want to go visit Luton.
I don't know. I think you just like, I feel like maybe, maybe you knew about what we've been doing this year. So we, we actually, a couple of things that we do that I think are really important is, I think sometimes when people look at data, they, they automatically go to like, who's the lowest? What's happening, right? And we kind of think about who's, who's not performing. But one of the things that people have to understand is, one, we at Central Office, especially in our instructional division, look at our data, we're looking where the high performing is happening. And so we have lots of classrooms across the district that, and I'm, I'm not even kidding, I have a pivot table with every single teacher, with, by every single student, by their scores for NWA, and we've looked at those, and we've talked with several of the teachers to say, what is it you're doing in your classroom? How can we learn from you? Many times I hear it's a lot of small group, a lot of one-on-one attention that they're giving to students, especially in our elementary schools. When we looked at Luton's data, we, we saw the same thing that you see. In fact, what we've done is, we have had, we've been utilizing Luton almost as a model school, and so we have had teachers from other schools come over. They do a day-long visitation in these classrooms, they take some notes, they create an action plan, they go back to their school, and they implement what they've seen. Now, are we going to say that Luton has arrived? No, because they still have a lot of work to do too. We all do. But we have looked across the school district to find which classrooms, which teachers are willing to open their doors and have that. We really want to expand that idea so that we have model classrooms across the district so I can go in and say, wow, that classroom just runs super smooth. What routines and procedures does that teacher have in place? So that we can take another teacher that might be a brand-new teacher, first-year, second-year teacher. It could be a veteran teacher that just wants to sharpen their skills. Here's a great classroom you could go to for the day, do an observation, meet with the teacher, principal afterward, and then put those strategies in place. And so those are some of the things that we have been doing this year, is being very intentional about where our high-performing classrooms are and where our high-performing schools are.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, one of the nice things that came out of the union negotiations for the LASA contract is how do we hold those CEOs, those principals accountable? And we've built in things like bonuses for raising your graduation rate and raising your attendance, but also a lot more of, look, you got to do your job, you know? And there's expectations there. So there's, you know, because of the way that union contracts work, there's certain rules and regulations as to how you can hold the principal accountable and what we do. But, you know, one of the things that we're really focusing on is looking at the, the metrics that we do use, and Jessica can go well into how principals are evaluated and held accountable. But one of the other things that we did last year was create those Spocks, the head of elementary, the head of middle school, and the head of high school, who now are the kind of supervisors of these principals, and they're the ones in the schools observing, not just the teachers, but observing the principals. You know, either writing commendations or recommendations of what they need to do. And, you know, certainly as a board, we'll have some conversations about how those leaders are doing, and we'll talk about what actions we might want to take, both in a very positive bonus sense and maybe some ameliorative actions as well. So you're 100% right, and, you know, the principal of a school is, I mean, is super important, and we as a district have to make sure that those folks are doing right by kids. And we're lucky that, you know, as we move forward, it looks like we're, we're doing better, right? But that doesn't mean that we don't do our job of holding people accountable to a real, a real standard of excellence, not just a, hey, are you here today? Okay, great, you get, you get your job. Like, we don't do that anymore, so.
I think the other thing that we brought in this year, that Ben brought in, was the quality review. And so the quality review really gives the principal a rubric of where are you with your leadership, what's happening in your school? They talked, spoke with parents, students, teachers. The principal themselves were interviewed, and they brought their own evidences in these different areas. And then the second part of that is they created an action plan. So what am I going to do with the areas I didn't do so well in, or our school was not scoring well in? They're tied to that rubric, and you'll see that one of our metrics is the quality review. You have to participate in that, and we should see your metrics increasing. And so that's one way that we're really kind of taking a very close look at our, our leadership and what's happening in schools. And then also, all of our principals were offered a coach that they can work with through the quality review process with all of that. We've had several, about half of our principals take us up on the coaching, because of course we know that coaching works when you want to be coached. And so we're going to start with those, those principals that have kind of volunteered. But you're right, we have, I often say to the Spocks, we have 26 opportunities for greatness, right? Because we have 26 schools, and so we need to make sure that we have the absolute right individuals in the right spots.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, well, it was, you beat me to that question. But it's okay. I, I think that when Ben talks about the contract, this is state law. So I think that, that's very important. The other thing is that maybe like every one of you, I would like to, to see the principal be the leader of that school and have meaningful meetings with, with the staff and all staff, really, not just teaching staff, but all of the staff that contribute to the kids' safety and education. So I, I think that we're moving, moving in the right direction now that principals can hire their own staff and make certain decisions so they don't feel tied to something that somebody else shows for them. So that's good. But I appreciate, appreciate the question, and we'll, we'll be keeping track of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, now we are going to do something very unconventional and call the meeting to order now. So at 7:25, I'm going to call our information studies session to order, and ask that the clerk please call the roll. Present. Thank you, and thank you very much to the patience of my colleagues. I did not anticipate getting a flat tire coming back from Gaylord, so I'm just glad we made it. With that being said, we don't have any additions to the agenda. I think that you guys are just willing to accept that we had our partnership presentation prior to calling the meeting to order, which brings us to a public comment on agenda items, of which we have none, which brings us to other business team necessary, which we have an opportunity to consider the purchase or lease of property, which the superintendent is permitted to discuss with our board in closed session. However, the Open Meetings Act requires that two-thirds of the elected and sitting members of the board be present to vote to go into closed session, which means we cannot go into closed session. Now, we can receive an update from the superintendent in open Now, we can receive an update from the superintendent in open session, so that's up to the will of the board. If they're willing for us to proceed, the superintendent is willing to proceed without going into closed session. All right, I'll turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. To President Willis's point, you know, certainly we have the right to go into closed session to discuss the purchase or lease of property. That's usually because you don't want to tell the other side how much you're willing to pay or things like that. But we have been already in conversation about certain things that we've been both public and private about. So I will do my best to say things that are clear but are not giving away too much. So, you know, as we all know, there is a piece of property very close to this building that we might be interested in. My ask of the board is, like we've done previously, is that you empower me to engage in negotiations. And all that, remember, allows us to do is to talk to the other side, give kind of a dollar figure of what we think we might be able to do. Then, of course, we go into inspection, and then everything comes back to this board, and it comes back to this board then first in closed session and then in open session. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. You, as board members, have been given some materials that, of course, could be FOIA if anybody wanted to. And really, all I'm asking is that we think it's a really good idea to move forward with starting those negotiations. And, you know, typically, the idea would be that we can do that, and I certainly just ask for your assent. And legally, you don't even have to give me the assent, but you know me, I'm always really open about things. And just to know that we do have $2.4 million-ish in what's generally referred to as the Shirley Fund, and so, yes, Fund 45, and the asking price of this property is below $400,000. And so we would certainly offer probably less. That's not shocking to anybody listening to the public, but that we have well enough money to, to cover this. But again, no decision would be made unless it was brought to the board. Everybody knows that when you deal with school districts, there's always that vote. This just allows us to kind of have that conversation. So that's, you know, that's where we are. And then, as you know, there is another piece of property that we have talked about both publicly and privately, and that is still on the, the market. And the owners have come back to us saying, hey, we don't want to pay for heat anymore and upkeep. We might be willing to negotiate much further down. So even though we've had some concerns about, about the state of that building, as I've written to you in updates and things, we actually think that it might be time to engage with them again. But again, nothing can ever be done without your assent, but I just want to be very clear that we can start having those conversations. And I think that the idea of having some expansion next to our schools is a really good idea to allow us to grow and then give better things for kids. So I think I, I tiptoed the line the right way.
I think so.
And so I just want to make sure, and thank the board for, for allowing us to have this conversation.
So just to summarize, the, the property on the south end of town, the initial checks that you told us about are moving in the right direction, that you want to continue engaging conversation. Sounds good. Property that we're revisiting, you'll just keep us informed if we get to a reasonable negotiation price that's worth putting Ben to paper.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
$2.4 million, and that money is from the sales of property, and so we typically think of using that money then for purchasing.
Yes. Perfect. Shirley was a smart woman. Ms. Lopez?
You need a motion?
Just informational, and I always want to be open with the board.
Appreciate it. We might have to do these in open session. Four seconds, and we go much faster. All right. Moving on, any additional public comment? Nope, we're good. Okay, comments from board members. Ms. Moore?
I have a did you know.
Ooh.
Did you know that in seventh grade, I performed on this stage
Same.
in my violin.
Same.
So that's my did you know.
I, and I played violin on the stage and I acted in two plays. I was the witch in The Wiz.
Okay.
And I melted. And they built me a little trap door, and I melted. And I was the cook in some other play. I don't even really remember.
Less important.
Less important, yeah, I don't know. That's why I know where everything is. It's like, we could go closed session downstairs, over there, it's fine. Okay, may I have a motion from the board to adjourn? It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Ms. Williams. At the Board of Education, adjourn. All of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Wonderful motion passes 5-0, and at 7:32, we are adjourned.